Good morning, everybody, and welcome to today's meeting of the Adult Health and Social Care Policy Committee. Thank you for attending and welcome again. The meeting today is open to the public. The meeting will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council website. It is also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and we broadcast this meeting. Please can I request that mobile phones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode as so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting. There is no fire test plan for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the town hall staff and the assembly point is Tudor Square as usual. I will now ask each committee member to introduce themselves and I will start here on my left.
Thank you. Good morning. My name's councillor Laura McLean. I'm councillor for Walkley and also a group spokesperson for this committee.
My name is Mary Lee. I'm councillor for Darnall Wood and I'm substituting for Matt Blair today.
Councillor McRooney, still struggling with IT. One day I'll get it right. I only do have to seek attention, you know, and I represent Woodhouse Ward, much to their embarrassment.
Always coming, causing trouble.
Good morning, everyone. Councillor Julie Grokup for Stockbridge and Firdlewood.
Councillor Dr Wazapwell, Stalington Ward.
Good morning, everyone. Councillor Sophie Thornton, councillor for Beechham Greenham Ward and deputy chair of the Policy Committee.
Good morning. I'm councillor Steve Ares, councillor for Graves Park.
I'll introduce myself before passing on to the officers. So I'm councillor Angela Ardencia and I chair this committee and I will pass on to Alexis, please.
So I'm Alexis Chapel, strategic director for Adult Care and Wellbeing.
Good morning, committee. I'm Robert Parkin, assistant director for legal services.
Good morning, committee. I am Rachel Marshall, principal democratic services officer.
And we have Alan supporting us on the tech just next to Rachel. So first item on the agenda is apologies for absence. So we've received apologies from councillor Matthew Dwyer and we've got councillor Mary Lee substituting for him and councillor Ruth Milson. Item two, exclusions of person public. There are no items on today's agenda that require exclusion of person public, so we're okay with that. And item three is declarations of interest. Do any member wish to declare an interest in any of the items of businesses, business on the agenda? So we noted that, yeah. And item four is minutes of the previous meeting that start on page 11 of the pack. So I will go through them in order. I have a matter arising, so I'm going to get the one from my pack square. Sorry. So I will go on page 11. If you have any items or any, I mean, you know, corrections, if anything isn't accurate, could you please let me know? Page 11, 12, 13. I have just a clarification on 56 to number five. We had a resolution regarding an extraordinary meeting in January. This, it was this, I just wanted to clarify that this was actually put in the diary, but then we had to cancel it because we couldn't, we couldn't have all the reports written up in the time scale in terms of publication on the website, et cetera. So this was postponed. So I just wanted to clarify that. Page 14, page 15, page 16, 17, 18, 19, 20. Are members happy for me to sign the minutes? So do I need to initial each page? Yes, don't do that now. You can do it later. Thank you. So we go on to item five, which is public questions and petition and statements. We did receive one remit question from Mr Don Lennox, which was published on the website along with response on the 10th of February 2025. We then received one supplementary question from Mr Lennox following the response to the remit question. Mr Lennox is not able to attend the meeting today and as we received the email just a couple of days ago, we will respond in writing within 10 days and the response will be published Item six, members' questions. We didn't receive any members' questions for this meeting, so I move on to agenda item seven, which is the work programme.
Rachel.
Thank you, Chair. In the agenda pack on page 21, you will see the start of the work programme. On page 24, you will see under section four, there are all the closed amendments, additions, anything that's been moved, removed or added is highlighted there. From page 27 onwards is the work programme for the rest of the municipal year and you will see that now there is also some extra meeting slots added in there for the municipal year that starts again, which will be after the AGM. There's nothing in there yet, but that will be obviously decided between yourselves and officers and that's open for you to discourse, comment on. So we would be asking you to agree the recommendations that are set out in this work programme. And I will pass back to Chair for any of you to comment. Thank you.
Are there any questions regarding the work programme? Obviously, we don't have the year for the new municipal yet because obviously that is going, is going to be worked out by officers. But from my point of view, I would like to see maybe March is already, you know, because there will be meetings in, we don't know the dates, but we'll know that it'll be September, you know, July, September, October, if we follow the same. Just have the updates that we get, you know, when we call for an update in six months, if they could be timetabled in so we know how busy months are with updates already in March. And then we, we are going to get together as a, as a group to decide what we want to see on the, on the agenda from kind of a policy point of view, if that is okay. But that would be useful for next month if possible.
Thank you for that, Chair, and I will note all that down, everything that you've just said. Thank you very much.
Great, thanks. So we are now moving on to item eight, which is adult climate statement delivery update. This is on page, this is on page 29 of the agenda and I believe that Nicola is presenting this report. Nicola, could you put the microphone on and your name card as well? There's a name card there. Thank you.
So firstly, with the recommendations, we're asking that the committee note the process, progress made towards the climate statement. Reaffirm our commitment to tackling climate change. Note, rather than acknowledge, as it says in your papers, sorry about that, actions including those that have not yet been completed that will reduce the impact of climate change in adult care and wellbeing services and request an update in 12 months' time. So as we know, the climate emergency is one of the biggest challenges we face and vulnerable people accessing care and support services will be among those most disproportionately affected. Therefore, we are committed to adapting health and social care services as set out in the committee's climate statement and the adult social care strategy. This update sets out our progress and learning in the last 12 months and our next steps. So over the last 12 months, we've undertaken assessment and action planning, staff engagement and collaboration, and system-wide engagement and collaboration. In the assessment part, staff took part in a pilot workshop to help share the council's wide toolkit for climate change vulnerability assessment and action planning. The guidance has been attached as an appendix to this report. This has now been shared across the Directorate for completion by all teams. In terms of staff engagement and collaboration, staff in workforce development established regular staff-led sessions to raise awareness, share ideas and new initiatives and opportunities for research and practice. The climate statement and delivery plan was also shared with staff at a recent whole service strategy review event in January. For system-wide engagement and collaboration, we presented the climate statement at a system-wide strategy delivery plan workshop in April 24, where participating organisations agreed to work collectively to contribute to its delivery. Following this, in November, we held an adult care and wellbeing partnership board workshop, including academic researchers presenting their work with discussion on how we can take this forward in adult care and wellbeing services. We looked at new impact-based heat health alerting systems, which would help home care providers to assess individual rooms for potential risks of heat stress and allocate rooms according to the health risks of the people staying there. We also looked at transferable learning from other settings such as nightclubs and schools in the design and adaptation of buildings to improve air quality. Looking forward, the refresh of the adult care and wellbeing strategy delivery plan includes a new climate project plan aligned to the climate statement. This includes an Atagland checklist for services in the Directorate to track progress against the milestones. Key actions are, at service level, teams are completing their vulnerability assessments and adaptation plans now and then reviewing and updating related climate impact assessments and business continuity plans and relevant actions will also be tracked in the strategy delivery plan. Commissioning and partnerships continue to work with providers to ensure that they also have robust assessments and plans with effective continuity arrangements and are working to net zero. At a system-wide level, we are establishing pilot projects through the partnership board to continue the learning from the research in November. Providers and researchers will work together and we are seeking funding streams to support this. This follows the, sorry, we'll be addressing heat risks, improving air quality and implementing more suitable heating systems as the first project. We'll also continue collaborating with partners, communities and people who use adult care and wellbeing services, including their families and unpaid carers, to identify more opportunities for adapting services that make them more resilient, contribute to decarbonisation and protect the most vulnerable. And we'll continue workforce engagement through the staff-led climate group, develop a bank, who are developing a bank of resources for use across the Directorate and are planning activities for World Earth Day on the 22nd of April. This will all be supported by awareness raising through the staff newsletter and promotion of the council-wide training. All of the actions in the next 12 months will be reported on to the senior and Directorate leadership teams as part of the strategy delivery plan. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Nicola, for that. I have a couple of questions. Before that, I am aware that it's really cold in here. If you have a coat, put it on or put it on your legs. We'll have to look into blankets for people or something when in here. Unfortunately, that's what happens when we are in a building that was built over 100 years ago and, you know, there used to be fireplaces in here, didn't there? But no more. So I've got councillor Ares who wants to speak.
Thank you, Chair. Questions around the, well, partly on slide page 48 around the resources, available resources and the financial implications, paragraph 7.4, which says that investment in mitigations likely to bring long-term benefits in terms of potentially reduced health and social care costs. To what extent, and forgive me because I'm not on the, I'm not on strategy and resources and the finance subcommittee, to what extent have we, have we looked at the benefits to, I know that we'll be coming on to the market sustainability report later on, in terms of the benefits to our care providers, independent care providers in the care homes, care homes they manage and the buildings that they manage? Because I get sense that the feedback from, from some of them is that by improving the long-term sustainability of their buildings, the buildings that they, they manage, that will mitigate some of the, the, the impact that they're suffering from as a result of the various, you know, national insurance contributions and so on, in the long term. So they are looking at their own costs at the same time. I'm just wondering to what extent has any work been done as to availability of resources, say that could be match funding or some sort of support for independent care providers to mitigate those building costs? Thank you.
I can't talk to the commissioning financial arrangements. I think that might be addressed more in the market and sustainability plan. But in terms of what we've explored so far, the, we, we know that by improving things like airflow and insulation and heat loss in the buildings, they can be more efficiently managed as well as providing better outcomes in terms of people's health and wellbeing. But one of the key things that came out of an ensuing discussion at the partnership board meeting was that a lot of the care providers who have care homes are using Economy VII heating systems, which are really inefficient and quite expensive. And so it's identified the need to do some work with researchers, but actually in practice in terms of delivering an intervention to look at more affordable and also more environmentally sound forms of heating, which will directly have a cost benefit to them. In terms of things like match funding and funding stream, we're speaking with the universities who have got access to funding through some ESRC money to look at Yorkshire projects around research and practice again in terms of implementing ways of tackling climate change and then researching their effectiveness and we hope to be successful in achieving that.
Thank you, Nicola, for that. And yes, we've, we've been having lots of conversations with providers regarding, I mean, Sophie and Laura and myself visited one of the care providers, care homes, and that was one of the things that was brought up, how, you know, their bills for electricity and gas is really high and how part of the building needs new windows, so it's not very well insulated. So, but they, at present, they can't afford to invest in the, in the building. So we are looking at solutions where we can find funding somewhere else because obviously the council doesn't have that capability. But we are having discussions with the university. I have just a couple of questions. One is in 2.13 and to 2.7, GoLearn is mentioned. How many staff do have access to GoLearn internet training? Is that for all staff? And then on page 32, you've mentioned it actually. I was wondering why nightclubs were used as a comparison because there are so many buildings now that are not fit for purpose and it's really kind of just jumped at me, like the nightclub thing. And also I was wondering, I mean, it's, it's really been amazing that the work, especially in the last few months in terms of collaboration with the university and the research. And it was quite sobering, the data from, you know, summer 2022, where we were shown the excess deaths in care homes because of the extreme heat in some of the rooms and compared to deaths in hospital, excess deaths in hospital, and it was higher, much higher. So that was quite something and we talked about risk assessment for care homes. So we, we're going to put something together so that homes can risk assess their rooms in extreme weather conditions, which is brilliant. But I was wondering whether we have been in touch with the, we've kind of connected with local partnerships, which is a company, it's owned by the local government association, it's wholly, and they've done quite a lot of research on this. I've got a link that I can send you and because it's local government association, it's accessible to us really easily and I wonder whether we could link with them in terms of data and some of the, the research that's been done on that point. I think it would be a really good thing to do. But I think it's also important, you know, to look at how we measure the progress because that's the thing that we're lacking, not, you know, not just us, but that is, some of the impact is not being measured properly and I think we need to have some kind of measures, how we know that the, the changes or the interventions that we're making are having impact as soon as possible because we, we obviously want better outcomes for people that are also going to help in terms of the environment, but actually they're going to be much better for people ultimately.
Okay, I'll answer your questions in turn. GoLearn is available to all staff, definitely those who have access to a computer and the internet. In terms of frontline working staff that don't use a computer, I believe there's another route for them to access that. I would need to find that out and come back to you. But we should be able to gather stats over the year of how many staff have completed the climate training on GoLearn and then keep monitoring that. In terms of the nightclubs, it is an interesting one. It was the researchers, we can't claim any credit for that sort of transferring of the learning. I think they'd already been doing some research, looking at heat stress and air quality in nightclubs. And then when the pandemic came about, they started looking into that in more detail in terms of places opening up and they transferred that learning to schools because they wanted to make sure that schools that were open through the pandemic had sufficient airflow to minimise risk of disease transmission. And for them, it then wasn't too much of a leap to think also about the benefits of airflow in terms of airborne viruses and also quality of air and temperature in other settings where vulnerable people might be. So that's where they made the leap, to care homes and they're quite excited, the research team, to then be working with providers to look into that in more detail. As to the research, I very much welcome that link. Thank you. The brilliant thing about being partnered up with the universities on this work is that they've got such a wealth of information already and as you've said, those statistics from last summer were really quite striking. And built into any intervention that they'll be involved in will have to be by, as a, as a means of their funding, measures that show what the impact is over time. But definite the LGA data will be helpful in accompanying that.
Thank you. I will send that to you. Are there any more questions? Okay, if there aren't, the recommendations are on page 30 of the pack and they are as follow. So the Adult Health and Social Care Policy Committee is recommended to note the process, the process made towards the climate statement. Is there supposed to be progress rather than process? Yeah. So can we correct that, please? Progress, progress, yeah. Reaffirm our commitment to tackling climate change and we're changing the word in three in note actions that have not yet been completed that will reduce the impact of climate change in adult health and wellbeing services and number four, request an update in 12 months' time. Thank you. We're moving now to item 10, nine, which is personalisation and direct payments update. And Mary and Andy are here to present for us. So this report is on page 55 of your pack. Do you want to start?
Good morning, everyone. I'm Mary Gardner. I'm Strategic Commissioning Manager for Direct Payments, Personalisation and Unpaid Carers. Jude's here supporting me, that's my P I this morning.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Andy Buxton, the Commissioning Officer for Direct Payments and Individual Service Funds. We're here today to update committee on the significant progress made in the past 12 months against a delivery plan for Sheffield's personalisation and direct payment strategy. The update report seeks to commit it to note the extensive positive progress against the strategy delivery plan, reaffirm our commitment to increase and further develop approaches and practice around personalisation, ensuring that self-directed support is a first consideration for those who draw on social care and to note the actions that have not yet been completed that will drive positive change and offer more choice and control for people who self-direct their support. The strategy was approved by committee in December 2022 and sets out the council's ambition for personalisation, describing how we'll ensure that people who draw on social care achieve personalised support and good outcomes through creative support planning and personal budgets. To begin with, I want to share with you our current position on direct payments, share with you some of the main highlights and achievements that have taken place in 2024 and then pass on to Mary, who will tell you more about the work on developing the personal assistant role and key planning activities for the coming year. There are currently 2,292 people in Sheffield benefiting from direct payments, of which 1,886 are adults and 401 are children and young people. This represents around 23% of people who draw on long-term support from adult social care and 11% of children and young people services. The annual budget for direct payments is 51.1 million. Direct payments are paid net of personal contributions and that's because people pay their assessed financial contribution directly into their direct payment accounts. So this means that the annual spend on direct payments is 49.5 million. The overarching aim of the strategy is to ensure that people who draw on social care in Sheffield are empowered to take control and self-direct their own care and support. As a result, people will achieve the outcomes that they choose and live the life they want to live. We continue to work collaboratively with people with lived experience, their families and carers and partners and stakeholders to shape, design and produce new and improved ways of working. Some of our most notable achievements in the past year include our new in-house direct payment support service. So following approval by committee in January last year, the support service was brought in-house and it launched in September. The support service has supported 112 people in the first quarter with their direct payment and this has included seven individual employers being directly supported. And this includes seven individual employers being directly supported to recruit personal assistants. We have a new direct payment procedures. These have been revised and provide updated information and clarity, reflecting the improvements undertaken to date. These procedures are mandatory reading for all staff in social care. In terms of individual service funds, our pilot is now live, following an appropriate contracting mechanism being arranged, which enables us to test out these new ways of working. So we have three support providers on board and we've been working with them to develop our ISF approach together and identify a small number of people who are interested in trying an ISF. The support planning is taking place now with support from social workers in advance of this new ISF delivery, which will result in people benefiting from greater variety, flexibility and personalised support. With the ISF pilot as well, we've also been testing out tools and resources developed through a national ISF research project that's led by the University of Sheffield. A highlight in November was as hosting Personalisation Week, which was a week-long programme of events, training and awareness sessions focused on personalised support. In the Winter Garden, we held a power of personalisation event where support providers and organisations promoted their work. Sheffield Voices shared their experiences by presenting scenes from their play Welcome to Sunny Smiles. And the tech room offered fantastic demonstrations from tech-enabled care solutions. The event was a great opportunity for social care to celebrate our commitment to personalisation and to gather insight and views about a wide variety of support options with people who attended. During the week, we also had eight online workshops and training sessions that were held on a variety of topics. This included creative support planning, the power of language and labels, and how to be a good employer. A hundred and two people participated in the online sessions throughout the week and all sessions were recorded and will be made available on the council's direct payment webpage. I'll now pass on to Mary, who'll talk to you more about the work to develop the P A workforce and some of our priority actions and activities for the next twelve months.
Thanks Andy. So when we were at committee before, they noted that there was lots of interesting questions around the personal assistant register and on development of the personal assistant workforce. So we thought it would be a good opportunity just to talk through some of the key highlights. And then I'll talk about the next steps for twenty twenty five for us. I guess namely the most headline success that we've had this year is the development of the P A register, how it's developed and grown. So this was a register that was created during Covid, but something that we felt very strongly that we needed to develop. We needed a platform where people could go to, where they could find person assistant roles, but also advertise themselves as person assistants looking for work. So Disability Sheffield have worked really hard in helping to develop that register further. We've now, we've had over ninety thousand visits since the relaunch last year. Two hundred and seventy one individual employers are registered on there. And we've got three hundred and fifty seven registered person assistants. And for the first time, we've got more person assistants than employers seeking work rather than advertising their roles. Those figures represent a growth of over two hundred percent of fall towards the register in the last twelve months, which is really a positive. There's been seven hundred and seventy four introductory links between individual employers and prospective P As. And Disability Sheffield are currently doing an evaluation on how many of those have led to active employment. Something really positive that's looking bright and positive for going forward. I guess there's been a couple of drivers that's helped the success of the register. And so I'm just going to name a couple of those. The role of the P A champions is something that we test, we're testing and piloting in Sheffield. It's not a role that we've come across in any other local authority. It's an initiative that we have recruited two person assistants, previous person assistants, because they're now champions, through Enable, sorry, through Embrace, which is a user-led organisation that we're working with. The person assistant champions, their role is to go out and promote the role of person assistant. They go out to job fairs, they go to colleges, they're making links with the university. And they're working very closely with the diverse communities that we have in Sheffield. Main thrust of their role is about promoting the role of person assistant. But they're also building a network and a community of support for existing person assistants as well. So people that are actually in the role feel that they've got a network and a contact if they're feeling isolated. Alongside the champions and the register, during November, during the personalisation week, we launched our hashtag personalisation, oh sorry, our P A and proud campaign. This is a campaign, a collaborative approach that's been made by Sheffield City Council, people who employ P As, P As themselves, local organisations that link with person assistant support, and two local artists, so Luke Horton and Fly Cheese Animation. The purpose of the work was to bring together positive images and stories of person assistant role, which was felt by people that was something that was lacking around in the past. We were able to bring positive images and stories. Luke Horton created a series of artworks. We were lucky to be able to launch that during personalisation week and exhibit it in the Winter Gardens. We've now fortunate to be able to host it in a vacant shop for free on Pinstone Street. So if you feel like you need to have a walk around town after this meeting, you can fight through the crowds of people that are looking in the window and have a look at that, the artwork. Also during personalisation week, we hosted the second annual person assistant workforce summit. Again, it's something that we're running in partnership with ADAS. It works across the whole of Yorkshire and Humber side. And the idea is about being able to take steps to positively promote the role of person assistants collectively as organisations, as local authorities, and working with P As and employers themselves. And so that was, that was a great success. And we've got a follow-up session next week from that summit. So although our strategy, presenting our strategy to you gives us an opportunity to celebrate the successes that we've been doing, it also gets us to focus on the breadth of work still left to do. So during twenty twenty five, some of our key pieces of work are going to be introducing the direct payment peer coaching and mentoring. This was something that was asked for as part of the direct payment support service coming in-house. The coaching and mentoring is a particular area of work where we support individuals that are already employers or P As to coach and mentor others. It was something people said was really important to them, that it's great to get professional advice and support through the journey of taking a direct payment and employment. But actually sometimes it's really helpful just to talk to somebody that's actually been in that situation and has done it before, the warts and all. So that coaching and mentoring is something that we're just going to be working through now. We're going to be working with local organisations to deliver that with us in partnership. We're undertaking the creative support planning testing. This is a piece of work that we're going to do with our Pathway to Adult and Team, our direct payment review team and our first contact teams. The idea of that is to look at creative ways that we can embed support planning and think about innovative ways and approaches that people can use their budget and spend their money differently, again, to enable them to have more everyday outcomes. We're also looking to start our calculating the budget project. That will complete three phases during twenty twenty five. The idea of the calculating the budget is for us to work with other authorities that are also working in this area, to particularly look at how we can set an indicative personal budget for people. When I describe an indicative personal budget, I mean that people will know what their budget is likely to be upfront before they start support planning. Again, that will give people better opportunity to think about what money they have available to them, what resources, what support they have within their own networks and their own community, and build together a package of support that works really well for them. But knowing, but knowing the budget upfront to be able to do that. We're also going to be working with our practice development colleagues to introduce a personalised target operating model. This is something that's come out of our initiative of working with self-directed futures. This is about us embedding self-directed support as a first model, which means that people that will come into social care will get, once they have an assessment and they have eligible needs, they'll get the opportunity to think about, do they want to arrange and organise their own support first of all, in first instance, so through a direct payment? Do they need, do they want to be able to control the support but need a bit of assistance? And therefore support with the direct payment? Whether a direct payment might not be fully appropriate? And then maybe an individual service fund is something that's more important to them? That will give them that protection and safety around arranging their support, but will also give them the freedom and the innovation to be able to use budgets differently? And then looking at if none of those suitable, whether our council arrange the support is more beneficial to them and that would meet their needs in a better way? We'll continue to build our sustainable market, particularly our person assistant workforce, but working with providers to think about how they can provide personalised support, work to more personalised outcomes for individuals, whether or not it's something that's on our framework or our council contracted support. We need to be able to support providers to have a flexible approach. And we're also working further on our personalisation board. That's the board that governs and promotes the work of co-production and our personalisation work. We want to make sure that we've got a right balance of people on that board that represents the different communities and the different people that are interested and that want to direct the work of personalisation going forward. So pretty packed agenda again for us this year, which the team, I'm grateful to say, are really chomping at the bit to get going. So thank you for listening, but if you've got any questions, Andy and I are happy to take them.
Councilor Thornton? It's less a question, more a comment really. Thank you for the work that you're doing in this space. I know that through the work that I do, that a lot of the time people do struggle to find P As in particular. So I think that the growth in the P A register is absolutely fantastic. And I'd like to pass on my thanks and I'm sure that my colleagues will echo that to the team because I think you're doing a really good job, so thank you.
Councilor Mary Lee?
Yeah, a couple of questions. One is about personal assistants coming from the BAME community. Do we have the numbers? Are we doing anything to encourage more people to seek that kind of work? Just wondered about that one. And also just about direct payments for people with mental health problems, who've got serious mental health problems. Is the uptake as it should be? That's the two questions.
Okay, so yes, so the work that we do with the P A register and promoting the role of person assistants across the communities is really being led by the champions. They're making sure that they're accessing all of the local communities. They're making networks into communities that are less usually likely to have an employment role around person assistants and often people depend on family members instead. I was talking to one of my colleagues who leads on the direct payment support service and she was talking about her community work that she's developed yesterday actually. And she's going into the networks and also being able to work with the cooperative to look at their community hubs and talk about direct payments for those, but also looking at how the role of person assistant can work for those. We've also worked really hard on looking at how the register works for people. So having it available in different languages, in different formats that work for people. This year, we're looking to develop it a bit more digitally, so it's a bit more interactive for people. But certainly, it's definitely more interactive. We've particularly been also working with Sharon Hirschman, who's the social worker that's got a lead for supporting people from the deaf community. And we're also working with Skills for Care to look at what the training opportunities are for workers that need to be BSL registered, but also need to provide some other types of personal support. So we're trying to slowly but surely work through all the different communities to make sure that it is fully representative. And I guess by having things like the campaign in a public domain where anybody can walk past in the street and see, actually this is a role that they could do, would be, is a really positive thing. At the launch night of the campaign, we had Tess Daly, who's a, we call her our sensation star around media, so she's big on the media platforms. But she had a P A with her who is neurodiverse and she talked a lot about how the role of person assistant works for her really well. So again, those sort of stories are promoted from BAME communities. And yes, mental health services, so direct payments are absolutely available to people with mental health problems. The numbers have always been quite stable around direct payments and the take-up for that. But again, looking at the different options that we've got, some people that maybe don't feel fully able to take on a direct payment at this stage. They've now got things like the Individual Service Fund pilot, which gives them the same flexibility, but a bit more of assistance and support to be able to manage the direct payment, particularly at the times where their wellbeing may be fluctuating.
Thank you, I have a couple of questions. You have partly answered one of my questions. So yeah, thank you so much for all the work and it's really exciting. And I've been quite involved with a lot of the things. And the exhibition on Pinstone Street, actually, I saw it again just last week and it is really nice. So go and have a look. Some of the kind of quotes and things, it's really inspiring, really makes you think about what being a P A means. Yeah, my kind of queries were about P As in terms of access needs, both from the point of view of someone needing a P A with certain skills. So how do we train and check the people who put themselves forward for P A? For example, for working with people with sensory needs or like people who are BSL users or deaf or visually impaired or have a neurodiversity? How do we check that they have the right training rather than people just saying, oh, I can work with, you know, people who are visually impaired? How do we know that they have the right training and how is that followed up? But also, how do we encourage, you know, on the back of Molly, I think, she was the P A that came to the event, she was herself neurodiverse? How do we encourage people who, for example, are BSL users or are neurodiverse or visually impaired themselves become P As? Because obviously they can, they have skills and they have understanding that we don't have. So how do we make it both the availability of P As that have skills, but also P A that have experience or, you know, have access needs themselves? How do we ensure and how do we make sure that everything is on that register? So that's my question.
Okay. So in terms of making sure that it's accessible as possible, we have with the register, we have a section that also covers information and training and guidance. So we try to promote. So one of the, one of the key things around people being in control of their own support is that there isn't, there isn't too many checks and balances in terms of people putting their other, let me get the wording right, so a professionalism of the role. So that's not to say it's not a professional role, it's not a recognised and an important role. But the idea from people employing their own person assistants was that people themselves know the skills and abilities that they want their person assistants to have. And that's really, really an important part of what being able to direct people's own support is about. So there aren't for people to be on the register, there isn't a necessary minimum standard that they need to meet or any checks and balances that we undertake as a council. That said, the support service, when they're supporting people to employ P As, will think about what the individual needs to think about. So obviously, they're informed by the person's support plan and the person knowing what type of support they need. And the role of the advisors is to help people think about when they're shortlisting person assistants, to look at what skills and knowledge they have. We also have a promotion on the website, we have a section on training. So people can go to the training section and see what training there is. So for example, the dementia stars training that's available for all council staff is also available for person assistants as well. And some of our other training is also available, things like moving in, moving in assisting and handling and first aid. We make sure that person assistants are welcomed onto those training programmes. We also have links to Skills for Care, which are the national organisations that look at the care force, the care workforce. Person assistants are a key element of that. And they release a fund of money each year for individual employers to be able to access funding directly, to be able to pay for training for their person assistants. Often it's something a bit more bespoke. So for example, it might be somebody that needs assistance with learning how to support somebody that's blind and is using a cane. Or it might be about BSL and an understanding about broader support needs than just being able to interpret. We have people that have accessed different training courses on different activities to be able to support the individual. So we make sure that people are really, really linked into those and we promote those wherever we have we can. We've also got individual, the Independent Living Group Person Assistant Membership, We've also got the Independent Living Group Personal Assistant membership, which is a national scheme that we've bought membership for, for PAs to be able to buy into. And that then gives people a national network so they can look at what other PAs are doing elsewhere in the country and look at what training is available. And that the IRGPA network is very much about sharing opportunities and sharing how they can work together. So, yeah, rather than trying to create everything here, we're trying to also look at what else is in existence and how we can best utilise and make best of that. But the bit you were saying about Molly, the most important thing was sharing stories because her talk and the way that she explained how the role works for her was really powerful. And we're trying really hard to gather all of those stories to make sure that we can promote it and make sure it really, you know, speaks to people.
Great, thank you. I'm going to move on to the recommendations, which are on page 56 of the pack. There are three recommendations. The first is to note the extensive positive progress made on the personalisation and direct payment strategy delivery plan. The second one is to reaffirm our commitment to increase and further develop approaches and practice around personalisation, ensuring self-directed support is the first consideration for those who draw on social care support. And the third one, I think we're going to change the first word to note rather than acknowledge. We had a discussion about this in the pre-meeting. Note action in brackets that have not yet been completed that will drive positive change and offer more choice and control for people who self-direct their own support. Are members happy with those recommendations? So the recommendations are accepted, thank you. And we move on to item 10. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mary and Andy. So item 10 is on page 103 of your pack and I have Andrew and Alexis presenting. This is the Adult Social Care Complaints Annual Report and Learning from Feedback Annual Report. So this is to present a report that refers to last financial year, so 2023-24, and the recommendations to go with it. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you. So yeah, to bring the 2023-24 annual report, findings from that, the learning, present that to yourselves. So from that 2023-24 annual report, we'd had 153 new complaints. The average response time to them being 60 working days and that being an improvement of 27 calendar days on the previous year, 22, 23. Of those, where we look at the complaint outcomes under misunderstanding clarified, complaint withdrawn or no action necessary, those 153 make up. There's 22% of those fall under that. 33% fall under resolved via a local resolution, which is things like review of somebody's support plan, conversation with somebody at an early stage. And then finally, just over a third, 34% service failure identified. And then we've got key learning identified within that. And a lot occurred throughout 23-24 period within service. So the range of improvements to services being, I mean, improvements to services for young people and adults through transition services. The implementation of the adult multi-agency safeguarding hub. So is that better early information sharing and risk management, keeping people safe and in that sense preventing complaints too. That wider improvement of recognition for the workforce too, so reviewing of roles. So ensuring we keep experienced staff, but also making sure within that there's progression routes for staff and a need for staff to evidence how they're progressing and building the knowledge. So that when we come into looking at feedback, again, that's prevention and making sure that people are receiving the right support at the right time from experienced staff who know Sheffield well. And we felt important within this as well to reflect after a conversation last year about presenting a full holistic picture to talk about the compliments too. And within that, we'd had 18 formal compliments within this timeframe. Internally as well, over the last couple of years, we've been trying to develop a culture within the workforce. So colleagues thanking each other where there has been a good experience or evidence in good practice. So internally, we have like a digital thank you wall. And there's been 94 times that staff have recorded on there. And we felt important in this as well to give the context of the work that we do, the amount of work completed. So we've completed 10,263 customers being supported with a formal care package. There's been 12,526 character assessments or reviews completed, which when we look at that to the previous financial year, that's an increase of 35%. So there's been some significant work undertaken in that time. And 3,138 financial assessments. But important to say whilst at the same time saying those figures and talking about the figures where it comes to complaints and the categories they fall under earlier, where we do receive any complaint, each individually is listened to, taken within the context of its own and responded to appropriately. And where there are any themes, as I say, where we look at the work that we've done around transitions, responding to them appropriately and building up the right response at that time and in the longer term, as we've tried to detail into the report as well. Open for any questions.
councillor Harris.
Yeah, I just wonder, it's sort of a general question when we do, obviously, when we have complaints, it's important that we learn putting the indication for that. But do we do any benchmarking with similar authorities just to see how we're performing in terms of handling, yeah, both compliments and complaints? Yeah, other like authorities.
To be honest, I would have to, I'm not sure if it's one thing, I don't believe it's something we have statutory reporting duty on. And so we'd have to go back to our corporate complaints team to see if we have got any data against other similar sized authorities. But I've not got that to hand, I'm afraid. No.
councillor Lee.
Yeah, my question is about, you gave the number here, 148 complaint responses. Have these complaints become official complaints? How many, I don't know if you know the answer to this one, how many people might complain, but it's been dealt with before it's got to the stage where it's become an official complaint that has to go through the system? You know, obviously, lots of things can be resolved before it ever reaches any kind of level that needs to be escalated. But there are no doubt still serious issues that might be having to be dealt with.
Yeah.
So have you got a flavour of that? I don't know if you know numbers, but an indication of what those things might be that get resolved early? Or maybe sometimes people just linger on with their grumble and don't actually get to the stage where they're making an official complaint because they don't know or... And I guess also some people need to have an advocate to work on their behalf and they may not be aware of that either. So I don't know if you can answer some of those questions?
Yeah, naturally, there are other ways where people might not be satisfied. And I think this report and the previous year's report reflects a more full picture than in previous years because with recording the early resolutions is something that's changed. But I think day to day, at times, there can be conversations where people might say they're not necessarily happy with some aspects of service. And not necessarily every one of them progresses into a formal complaint because it might be a very early conversation and the person's already been able to provide a solution to something. So I can't give an exact figure on how many of those are and some of that might be due to the skill of the workforce. It doesn't necessarily progress to be a formal complaint, but people should be having, I say people, our workforce should be having that conversation with the person to make them aware they have got a right to make a formal complaint if they wish to do so.
Is our teams, one of the key developments we've done over the last four years is really work with individuals to try and do that early resolution because often that's the best way for individuals, is to try and resolve, you know, concerns at an early stage. And hopefully, that good conversation means that from a point of view of individuals, they are more satisfied with our care and delivery. And we have got some data in the, you know, that we receive that gives that data in terms of informal support. So we could take that forward at a briefing session and give that to members. But this particular report is focused on the complaints that ultimately make it to a formal complaint. But certainly our teams, and I know right across our care and assessment teams in particular, is what they've really tried to go and do now is work with individuals to work through their concerns. And I think that has been appreciated, I think, by particularly individuals and carers. And that's when you look at the kind of numbers and against, you know, the actual volume of, kind of, you know, of assessments that we work with. That's why we've got probably quite a lower number of complaints because the teams are actually trying to resolve things at an earlier stage with individuals, which is to me the best way forward. Yeah.
councillor McLean and then councillor Grokett.
Thank you. Thanks for this report and it's really good to hear that answer you've just given about how things are getting resolved earlier and how people are sort of doing that. That's good to hear. Just had a quick question about section 10, about the quality assurance of complaint handling and about how it's recommended any person responding to complaints in writing attends the training and development course, which is really good to hear. And I just wondered if those figures are monitored? And if they're not, if there'll be a way to sort of do that and maybe encourage attendance for that course, really? Thank you.
So the figures are monitored and basically our priority is for 25-26 to go and have all the team managers and service managers complete the complaints training. So that's the, last year we wanted to complete another set of mandatory training. So this year, our priority for going 25-26 is to have, to get us to a stage of 85% of our team managers or service managers have completed up. And that'll be one of the key roles that our new director posts will be leading on and taking that forward. And that means then we've got a quality assurance right across the service in relation to complaints. And probably this juge you tend to note is actually the corporate complaints team who do a lot of work behind us, have done a really grand job over the last couple of years. And that's been developing the complaints training, developing reports, but also what they do. And I think this is the bit that's not just about the training, is our corporate complaints team and one of our own dedicated practice development officers actually meet with our team managers and service managers on a monthly basis and they work through all the complaints. But what they also do is work through the learning from complaints and work through kind of any issues arising. So I always think you can completely look at your learning training, but sometimes what's just as important is you have it in a day-to-day practice, you're embedding it. And so for us, that's the approach I took over the last year was to kind of embed that as an approach, which I think has actually been quite helpful. And that means then we don't have now a lot of complaints that are over 50 days. We don't have a lot of complaints that are being outstanding for resolution because we're working it through on a monthly basis, if that makes sense. So that, I think, has been more helpful to our team managers and service managers at a practical level at this point in time. And then so next year, the training will be a breeze. That's key then.
councillor Grokett.
Thank you. And I think anybody who's sort of listening or who's looked at the report will realise, you know, the really thorough job that we're doing in relation to complaints, how we're handling them. And particularly the point you just made about how quickly we're making sure that we get to a resolution as well because I think that's really important for, you know, organisationally, for us to learn the lessons, particularly if an individual staff member is being involved so that can be resolved. And more importantly, for the person who is making the complaint. But I just wanted to pick up on a point that councillor Lee made about the, if you like, pre-complaint situation. Because if we look at the paper where it says, you know, what is a complaint at 2.2? Sheffield City Council defines a complaint as any expression of dissatisfaction, whether justified or not. So in effect, we are saying that a complaint is anything that is at that very early stage, whether it's formalised or not, because someone has shown some dissatisfaction. So I think it's just about making sure that we can pick up that learning. And I would hate for that to become an issue because clearly if somebody can say, I'm not very happy with this, A, B and C, and they can get a response and that is dealt with, then that is good. But that may just be something that is a regular occurrence, that's something that's not picked up in policy process or procedure and could be if we were aware of it. So I just really wanted to echo the point that Mary was making about that. Thank you.
Yeah, just to add to that, I think sometimes the inquiries that people might make with us, it might be with another aspect, dissatisfaction with maybe a service that they've received and we might advocate for them in supporting them to raise their concern to that potentially care provider through our commissioning service, through our quality teams. So then we have other ways of doing that with what we call IRF forms, which we log on the system and build up and they support other knowledge around organisational safeguarding. And whether a number of those about incidents of a low-level nature may build up to be a bigger concern or a number of those in our quality teams in commissioning, we work in partnership with those. So sometimes it depends upon what the nature of a concern is as well.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. I think what is different from my point of view in terms of having been around for a while is the fact that we, as an authority, are being transparent, clear, and we are not hiding when we make a mistake. Because mistakes are always going to be made because with the numbers that we have and the very delicate nature of some of the services that we deliver, it can never be perfect. I think what's important is that we own up to it and we find resolutions as soon as possible. And I think that is a completely different kind of culture in the council, from my point of view. So I'm very grateful for this and, you know, I'm really grateful for all the work that goes on. And as councillors, we know that we get emails when things go wrong and we need to continue, you know, to advocate for people. But it's really good to have kind of been kind of a listening kind of... And I think it's also really important that we have the compliments and the thing as a learning of what we do well. Because often, if we focus just on what goes wrong and lesson learned, we forget that actually there's a lot of work that is done day in, day out. That is really good and that should be the norm. So I think it's really important that we also, so thank you very much for that. So the recommendations for this paper are on page 104. There are two. One is to seek endorsement of the Adult Social Care Complaints Annual Report 2023-2024. And the second one is to seek endorsement of the progress in working towards the outcome set out, sorry, set out in the complaints delivery plan. Are members happy to approve those? Great, it's unanimous again. And thank you so much, Andrew and Alexis. And we are going on to item 11, which is the market sustainability paper, which is on page 137 and Catherine is presenting this for us.
No, don't worry, just start. Hi, yes, sorry about that. My name is Catherine Bunton and I'm the Director of Quality Strategy and Partnerships in Adult Care and Wellbeing. So this is a short report today, brought to committee following our December report on market sustainability and care fees for 25-26. The added dimension of the national insurance policy this year has meant that we are still in consultation with providers following committee in December. We had an event on the 20th of December. It was really well attended and there was lots of conversation from providers, including mitigations to financial sustainability, but also other impacts that we want to consider further. And hence, we've got a follow-on event on the 24th of February. And I particularly want to make sure that we complete full the qualities impact analysis with the March Committee on Fees, given some of the impacts that the pressure might have on providers. And the report itself summarises the wider activity that council undertakes to achieve a sustainable market, fee rates is one of those. But it's also important that we demonstrate that we deliver upon those statutory duties through our market shaping activity, which includes our commissioning strategies and our partnership work. So committee are asked to note really the ongoing work that we're doing. And I acknowledge it's a later... Um, I acknowledge it's a later times scale than we aim for, um, and the actual fee rate proposal will come to March.
Thank you. And just to, I've remembered that one of the reasons for that is because there is a meeting with providers, isn't there? Next, is it next week on the afternoon?
Yes, it's the twenty fourth. With next week being half term, both for council staff and providers.
Yeah, yeah.
We've moved it to Monday, the twenty fourth. Yeah.
Hi, Councilor Sapwell. Hi there. Um, I think we all agree that our care workforce deserve a fair pay for the vital work that they do. But what with the increased cost to our providers regarding the increased living wage and rise in national insurance contributions from the employer side, and I know you probably have exact numbers here, but what's the predicted increased cost passed on to the council? What's the expected relief package being sent from national governments to, um, pay towards this? Um, do we have an idea, a rough estimate of what the difference between the two is likely to be?
The council hasn't been funded for the impact of the national insurance policy for our provider services, though we have received funding to cover the council's own costs. The financial impact is remarkably varied actually on social care providers in the voluntary and community sector. It's significant, um, but it's hard to give a single figure or impact for any one provider. Um, it very much fluctuates depending on, um, and the impact and the sort of disproportionality depending on the makeup of your workforce. Obviously, we know that in social care, you tend to get a, a higher proportion of people working either shifts or part-time. And so this policy particularly has an impact there. Um, it is not so much the case as it was, but a higher female workforce, uh, so that's part of the qualities impact that we really want to make sure that we're delivering. Um, so whilst we, the governments, passed on the Market Sustainability and Improvement Fund, a legacy of pressures makes the situation challenging.
That's very diplomatic. Um. I've forgotten what I was going to ask. Are there any other questions, uh, Council McLean? And then I'll try to remember what I was going to say.
Thank you, Councilor Gencio. Excuse me. Um, thanks Catherine for bringing this report. And myself along with other members of this committee were at the provider event in December. And it was really good to be there and to hear from all the providers and really appreciate everyone coming, them all coming at that time of year. It's a busy time of year for them all. So it was really positive and everyone came. And it was really good to hear the conversations sort of beginning and also continuing over, um, how the sector can work collaboratively, collaboratively together to sort of ensure the stability. And I just wondered if you'd be able to expand a little bit on what that might look like? And the impact of doing that would have, be for both the providers but also for those in our city who purchase care?
Yes. So it was a really, really useful conversation and one that we're also having through the Adults Partnership Board and how we can work collectively. Um, this isn't, you, these examples aren't universally applicable to every type of care provision, uh, but particularly around, uh, the residential sector. We were exploring the options for collective purchasing, which might allow our providers to get better rates, looking at the, um, linking in with our work on the Care Academy, recruitment, staff retention and how working together might create an economy of scale, I think, for some of our smaller providers that larger national providers naturally get because of their size. Nicola was here earlier talking about the potential of, um, energy efficiency. Um, some of those things are less possible for supported living providers and home care providers where the care tends to be delivered in people's own properties. We should of course still be looking at energy efficiency and in our home care contracts because we've gone to area-based contracts, that has a positive impact on travel, um, and recruitment there. So there are those wider kind of market shaping and working collaboratively, both with providers as a council and providers working collaboratively with each other that provides some mitigation. Um, there are also wider things that providers are looking around, looking at, including their own staffing structures, what they might be able to do differently. Um, and then you start leaning into the, possibly the lost opportunities around some of the innovation, the improvements have to be put on pause, uh, until the financial stability is in place.
Thanks, Councilor Sapwell.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you Catherine for bringing this report. I know that's obviously a quite a politically hot topic, um, at the minute. Um, and the way that, that's been handled and been handled as collaboratively as, as possible, um, I think is a credit to, to your team. Um, I wanted to ask a couple of questions, just as a, as a, to a, to a layperson in Sheffield who, you know, a member of the public might read this report and be quite concerned about the, the state of play um, across the care sector in Sheffield. How would you explain the current, the current situation that we're in? Um, to a regular member of the public?
I would say, yeah, I think that's fair. Um, yeah, there's something about my committee report writing style possibly that isn't totally digestible. I think that the, in Sheffield, we are really lucky to have a healthy range of providers and a, a growing positive relationship with our providers where we are working collaboratively and we're seeking to overcome challenges together. We have a mixed, people buy services in a different way. Some people have their care and support purchased by the council. Some people purchase it privately. Um, and that creates a, um, not uncomplicated system of different charging rates, different ways of working and different contracting. We've got some healthy contracts and we've got some healthy markets and the commissioning team as well as looking to work with providers to get long-term contractual sustainability. Um, oh, I've lost my train of thought completely. Also, look at what the sustainability risks might be so that we can try and work out, are there any providers, like individual providers, that might be more at risk here where people are receiving care and support? And what are our options available to make sure that those people get continuity of care? So I wouldn't want the public to be worried, but I would want them to recognise that social care is a hugely important, vital part of the tapestry of the communities in which we live. And it's all our job to promote that and protect it.
Thank you. That, um, the sustainability risks that you mentioned actually feeds really nicely on to the, to the second question I had, which is how concerned, are we and how concerned should the public be about providers exiting the market?
Today, I feel moderately confident that there will be sufficient provision in the city now and in the future. We should always expect some providers to exit the market, regardless of the changes in the wider context. Lots of providers are independent businesses that make different decisions uh, and, and might want to relocate, downsize or go in a different direction. So the council's well practised at managing a provider exiting the market, both in a planned way and sometimes in a less planned way. And that can sometimes happen if regulatory bodies such as the Care Quality Commission come in and find something that they're worried about. Um, we're able to, we've got a, a high number of providers delivering home care, a really healthy response to our supported living law on our Adults with Future Options framework, um, and good, um, good rates of availability across the majority of our residential care. It is true that the more complex and more bespoke care needs to be, the broader we have to look, including sometimes out of the city and regionally, but those care provisions are still there. Um, I, so I'm confident that that continuity of care will be able to continue to be delivered. Um, and I wouldn't want people to be unduly worried about it. It, it's a challenge, but it's a manageable one.
Councilor Eris.
In layperson's terms, should a worst-case scenario occur and a large number of the, um, that, uh, really good balance of, of, of providers that we have decide that, you know, to exit the market? What measures do we have in place so that we don't get overtaken by the larger corporate, uh, providers that may upset that market in layman, layperson's terms?
In, in layperson's terms, so we look, um, we know how many providers we've got and how many people each of those providers are supporting. Part of the conversations that we're having in the moment is to get a better understanding of the number of people who pay privately for their care, which typically the council might have less knowledge about. We're also having open and honest conversations with individual providers to understand any particular risks that they might have in terms of their financial viability, which helps us to, um, respond collectively and appropriately. Uh, and one of the things that we are developing is a way to make sure that those conversations are open, transparent, there's a clear process for providers to go through. That means that we should be able to predict any signs of, um, providers looking at whether or not they want to hand back a contract and act early before it gets to the point where, uh, we would have a significant number. The other protections that we've got in place are some of our contracts. Uh, so if I use the Care and Wellbeing Contract where we've got a group, a smaller group of home care providers and who work in patches across the city, that, that enables us to work with, um, providers in a very positive way to be able to respond and, um, support people where other providers may have exited the market. Uh, one of the risks that I think possibly you were alluding to was, was a financial risk on the council, um, where, uh, so way before it gets to the point where the continuity of care is, is at risk, it isn't, people will still get care. There's a risk that, um, the costs become less manageable for all. And that has a knock-on impact, impact on people who make contributions and buy their own care as well. Um, so that is also part of our understanding who's being supported by which providers, which contracts have we got in place and how healthy are those contracts? I think that's probably as much as I can say, Councilor Eris. Thank you.
Uh, thanks Catherine. I've sort of, um, I've remembered what I wanted to say. It was going back to national insurance. I would just, um, to kind of, um, um, be more precise. Um, whilst the, the national government has not funded local authority to support national insurance increase in the, for the providers, they've not even paid for the impact of national, all of the impact of national insurance for our own council. So we don't get all of the, you know, the, um, so I think that's really important because we, you know, we've got to, um, balance the budget and it's really, really difficult. Um, um, what I am also concerned about, and I know we've had this conversation in briefings, is that the quality of the care delivered by our providers, because they're having to make choices about how many staff they've on, for example, because, because of the increase in the national insurance. And also, um, not necessarily providers, um, you know, um, getting out of a contract or, you know, exiting, but renegotiating what care they provide, because they may say, we can only provide this amount of care because we ha- having to cut, cut, uh, staff costs. So how are we monitoring the quality of care delivered following the impact of the national insurance? And, and ensuring that especially the big providers that have the economies of scale where they can actually, um, you know, they, they cannot absorb, if you want, the impact of the national insurance. Uh, don't use that as an excuse to deliver worse services. Or on the reverse, small providers, for example, a provider that has one care home, um, and they decide to, you know, they can still be in business, but they'll have to cut, you know, the staff ratio uh, on any, on any shift. So that means that people will get a worse, you know, service. Uh, so how do we monitor, one, that we don't use that as an excuse to deliver worse services or let, you know, fewer services? And two, that how do we support the providers to, you know, to deliver the services to the, of this, you know, of a good or outstanding quality for, um, for people?
So we've got a care quality framework which sets out, um, the minimum standards that we would expect across our care provision, but also our ambition to be, uh, providing excellent quality care for people in the city. And that ambition and that framework still stands. Um, you're right that in our conversations with providers, at the moment they're risks rather than issues, uh, but they've noted that changing staffing ratios, um, cutting back on some elements of the service that they provision, they provide is one way that they might mitigate. Um, and as Councilor Sapwell mentioned earlier, sort of the ambition around the improving terms and conditions for the workforce is also something that might possibly have to be paused for some providers. And so I would answer that by saying that some of the support to providers is around best practice, trying to have contractual relationships that aim for the highest possible ambition, but also remove some of the elements of competition amongst providers. And again, I'd point to our home care contracts where, because providers are, have a set patch area, they are more, uh, that we have set up a system whereby they can work collaboratively to share best practice and share some of the costs potentially for smaller providers. Um, and yeah, sort of calling back the answer to Councilor McLean's question about what, what can providers do together? That would be one of the things that we would be seeking as officers to support. Um, whilst, similar to an earlier report, uh, I think it was possibly Mary's report where you were saying, but how, how are we going to track the impact of this? It's our responsibility to track the impact of that and to raise it, um, through committee and through our own escalation, um, procedures as a council and regionally, where it's a risk to the sector. Yeah.
See, I think really just as helpful to note for the, the minute today is that, um, the questions posed by members are really helpful questions and good scrutiny questions. I think particularly around the issues that we are challenged with now in the care sector. And we do have an event that's organised for the twenty second of November with care providers. And that's follow-on from December. And at that event, what we're going to explore further is some of the questions that's been posed around, you know, the impact on quality, the impact on risk to providers and equally the contingency planning that, that we need to think about, which is the kind of crux of, of kind of some of the, the questions. And, you know, from a, from a local authority perspective, we, our, our duty is to provide care to individuals. That, that's our duty under the CARE Act and have a sufficient market to go and do that. And these are some of the questions that we need to think about as we go into the next stage, is how do we ensure that we are meeting our legal duties at the same time, you know, as, as meeting where, 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 um, where, in terms of delivery of care to individuals within the financial end of the resource that we have available to us. And, you know, by working with the care sector, we will try to find, you know, a way forward throughout this. But it is acknowledged that that will be, uh, relatively challenged. Um, so, 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 you know, so, um, we are, you know, but our ambition is to work collaboratively with the sector so that we can find a way forward that ultimately improves outcomes for individuals, which is why we are here. Um, I suppose the, the kind of other bit from that is probably just to note nationally, and I think members are cited on that, that providers are, you know, have came together under Providers United to look at and to raise some concerns nationally as well around, around these issues. But, you know, um, so just making members aware of that particular issue. But from our perspective, it is about trying to work with the sector in a productive and constructive way.
Thank you. Um, there is one recommendation, uh, on this report on page one hundred and thirty eight. Uh, Adult Health and Social Care Policy Committee is recommended to note the process of proposing fee rates for cancelled contracted provider in the financial year twenty twenty five, twenty six. Uh, members happy with that recommendation? Thank you. It's unanimous. And thank you Catherine. And we move on to our last, um, report, which is item twelve on your agenda. Uh, it's on page hundred and sixty one and I believe I have Rachel presenting. Thank you.
Uh, good morning, everybody. Um, I'm here to talk about the, um, private sector housing assistance policy. Amendments, um, to the private sector housing assistance policy, which covers, um, assistance that we can provide, uh, to help private occupiers with their housing, either to make adaptations or improvements to their home, and it. And it includes elements regarding the disabled facilities grants, which the amendments relate to. So we are seeking today is for you to note the six amendments that have been made to the policy following the Housing Committee approval on the twenty third of Jan, January. And the report sets out why the changes are needed with the background of what disabled facilities grants are and why they're provided and the level of demand for disabled facilities grants. We have a waiting list of around three hundred and thirty households waiting for completion of works and a further five hundred waiting for assessments, but this has reduced from fifteen hundred in January twenty twenty four. But the level of demands means we must ensure that we are using our resources effectively to meet the mandatory D F G scheme requirements and anything that is critical to support the mandatory scheme. Funding pressures have been building up, and we're becoming more efficient at delivering the disabled facilities grants. There is a risk that the assessed need will outpace the budget. We did have some good news in January from government, who provided an uplift to the D F G grant, which is helpful, but there is still pressure going forward in terms of meeting the huge demand for mandatory D F Gs and making sure that they're priority and offering discretionary assistance as and when we can. So we put forward and worked closely, so I work in strategic housing on the policy, and I've worked closely with my colleagues in adult social care to put forward the amendments for the disabled facilities grants funded elements of the policy. And there's six amendments that have been made to the policy. These are, include mandatory disabled facilities grants within the policy. So the mandatory disabled facilities grants are the grants of, the means tested grants of up to thirty thousand to provide adaptations to people's homes. That previously wasn't in the policy, but we felt it would make it a lot clearer for customers to have everything in one place. Add a local land charge on to the mandatory disabled facilities grants and the disabled facilities grants top-up grants. So the D F G top-up is, adds an extra twenty thousand to the thirty thousand where it's deemed necessary to do this to achieve the required works. The local land charge is a standard approach that most local authorities take in their policies. And then the eligibility of the accelerated adaptations grant, so that it aligns with the, with the eligibility for the, receiving the D F G. Remove the minor works grants, because of the assistance is available that we use, such as minor adaptations through the two thousand and fourteen Care Act. The policy also includes the provision of equipment and technology. And five, amend the disabled person's home appreciation loan, and this will be used now only to pay towards the customer's means tested contribution to the D F G works if they have no other means of paying this means tested contribution. And finally, the final amendment was to reduce the relocation loan, which is offered when a D F G is not feasible in their current property, from forty, from seventy thousand to forty thousand. This is still a reasonable amount compared to what other local authorities offer. And once, i- if the people move into a new property, they, they can get a further assistance through a mandatory D F G within the new property. So those are the six amendments that we would like noting today. And this mainly relates to making effective use of the D F G budget whilst ensuring that the mandatory disabled facilities grants can be provided as a first port of call, as we have a statutory duty to, to provide those. Thank you.
Thanks, Rachel. And before I take questions, I just wanted to clarify why this has come to us. I mean, it's quite obvious why it's come to us, but also the fact that we've had joint briefing between housing and our committee on this topic, and that the, the disability grant element of it has been worked on together with offices from Adult Health, Social Care and Housing, just for colleagues who might not be, who might not be in the, in the briefing, and for people out there to try to understand. So the decision has already been made. We are just asked to note the decision taken by the Housing Committee on the twenty third of January. Are there any questions from colleagues on this report? Wow. I know that you've got lot, that Kelly got lots of questions. Kelly, who was our officer, was at the Housing Committee, and she's, she was asked lots of questions and drilled quite a lot. So, but yeah. So are we happy with the recommendation? They are on page one hundred and sixty three. It's quite long, I'll read it to you. It's one recommendation, but it quotes all the appendices. So Adult Health and Social Care Policy Committee is asked to note that the Housing Policy Committee on the twenty third of January twenty twenty five conceded and approved the following amendments to the private sector housing assistance policy. Appendix one, so amendment one, include mandatory disabled facility grant in the policy. Amendment two, introduce a local land charge with the mandatory and top-up disabled facility grants. Amendment three, changes to the accelerated adaptation grant eligibility to be renamed as accelerated disabled facility adaptations grant. Amendment four, removal of the minor work grants. Number, amendment five, amend the purpose of the disabled person's home appreciation loan. And amendment six, changes to the relocation loan to separate out the two purposes and reduce the loan amount of the disability facilities grant element to a maximum discretionary amount of forty thousand pounds. Are members happy to note that recommendation? It's unanimous? Thank you very much. So I have, I don't think, this might be my, I think my quickest, my fastest one was one hour eighteen. This is the, the shortest agenda we've ever had. So our next meeting, no idea when it is, is the twenty sixth of March, so I shall, I shall see you there. Thank you.